I would like to call to order the February 1st meeting of the Needham School Committee.
And you may have mentioned that we just came out of executive session and convening.
We are returning to open session from an executive session for the purposes of discussing And at this point, we will entertain, let me get, would like to entertain any comments from the public, either on Zoom or in the room with us. If you are on Zoom and would like to speak, if you would use the raise hands feature. I can see that we're collecting attendees as we, so I'm going to give us another few seconds or minute here. Anyone, it looks like we don't have anybody from the public in the audience here. Okay, I've seen no hands raised, so no public comment tonight. We will move into school committee chair and subcommittee updates. Anyone have something they'd like to talk about? Mike?
I wanted to share that we do have, the planning board has created a task force, a working group to address housing concerns. As the last time that the community has had a housing sort of survey was back in 2007. And so last Thursday, there was an opportunity, a public forum for all Needham residents to participate as part of a year-long initiative in terms of addressing housing concerns in the community from the working group. And so I am the liaison for that and uncovering a good amount of feedback from residents on their thoughts and concerns in housing, creating more affordable housing, how multi-unit housing could potentially impact our school districts as we think about master plans. So that is available for the recording, should individuals be interested in reviewing that.
Thank you. Any other comments? There's a lot of meetings going on in town that involve the schools in various ways, so we'll all try to pay attention to those. Finance Committee, the Community Preservation Committee and others are going on to discuss some of our projects that are coming up or needs that are coming up. I think the superintendent's going to mention something as well. Michael, did you want to?
Can you mention the CPC meeting?
No, I was not going to talk about that.
Okay, just to mention that, you know, the superintendent ended come and present the Evergreen Grover renovation, the proposal for the CPC's consideration, had some questions. This is something that, there's some new CPC members that need to come up on speed on it, and there's, you know, a lot of work still to be done, but they were appreciative for the information they got, and they will be considering this along with the other requests they have as they look at what the financing is available and whether, A, whether they believe they should, and then what they might be able to do to offer in terms of funding if they decide that this project should be supported. So they will continue to meet on this and other projects over the next couple of months. But a lot of town meeting members have asked us about this, and all we can say to them is that, you know, we have put something in, but we have no, we don't control what the CPC ultimately concludes in terms of their recommendation. So, and that when we have put our estimates in front of the community, we've really, we've not included anything there. We've just said that we've asked and we hope that there'll be some support in the school committee, and the school community will be extraordinarily grateful for whatever support the CPC can provide if they're able to do so.
What I found most interesting about that meeting, maybe not most, but interesting, was the architect presented some of what's possible, and apparently the attic will be usable space, which might be very, might be a good addition to the plans for the EGE, but we'll see more of that as time goes on. Any other comments? I will not report on the Joint Health and Safety Committee, I just realized that I don't because it's always part of our meeting from Dr. Kudikens. Let's move into superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Three brief things this evening. First of all, a happy Lunar New Year to our community and families who are celebrating the Year of the Tiger, beginning tonight. I also wanted to acknowledge and thank the Needham Public Facilities and Needham Public Works Department for their work to keep our, get our schools and community really ready for classes on Monday. It was a long weekend. The town is down workers, which are hard to find, and folks have been working double time. I know that the custodian, the building custodians, for example, you know, slept in the buildings for a few hours, or some of the workers in local hotels, and they were back at it. And some of them only really got a few hours of sleep on Saturday night and Sunday night, and then were back at their, you know, working with all the kids and helping them out. So I really appreciate all the time and efforts that they have put in. It's not work that you often see because we're all home and safe and warm, and they're at it in the midst of the storm. So I appreciate everything that they have done. I wanted to mention that next Tuesday, a week from tonight, I know the school committee thought that they were going to have next Tuesday off, but we've decided to keep you busy. There will be a 7:00 PM virtual meeting for the family, for families in the community to discuss the school master plan study, where we're at, what it looks like, what some of the options are, timeline. And Doran Whittier, our architects, will present an overview, and then there'll be an opportunity for community members to weigh in, perhaps ask questions. All of this is in service, frankly, to having the school committee understand where the community's at so that eventually, after some more conversations with town boards, you can make a decision to perhaps drop one or two options so that it can be more tightly focused and you can receive some more financing details and plans. I've sent an email to families to sign up. It's also been in the Hometown Weekly. My blog has more information, and I encourage folks to go to the district's website to get more information about this meeting, which will also be posted for folks to click onto.
Let me put it on my Facebook page also.
Yep, yep. So those are my comments for this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I think the students were so glad to have a snow day on Saturday. Superintendent gave them a...
I understand that to be the case. I under, yes, I do.
We'll now move into, I must say...
It was the only tweet I've ever tweeted out that's been viewed 24,000 times, so that was the first.
Everybody couldn't believe it, so they looked several times.
I know, they looked to make sure it was right.
Right. I always do look at the thread when there's a snow day coming because everybody really keeps an eye on Dr. Kudikens as to whether he's going to succumb to a snow day. We'll now move into consent items. Consent agenda has one item on it, which is to approve the minutes of the meeting of December 7th, 2021. Does anyone wish to remove any item, i.e. this item, from the consent agenda? Seeing none, there being no objection, this item is adopted by unanimous consent. And we will move right into discussion items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, this evening marks the first of eight presentations to the school committee regarding school improvement plans. And the school improvement plans, I think over time, have served to, first of all, provide a framework for the work of the school council, which is based on the portrait of Needham graduate. They've also provided a venue for the school council, particularly the principal, to share some of the opportunities, challenges and excitement that's going on in each school. And so much of that related to the school improvement plan, but sometimes it's not directly. So this evening, I would like to welcome members of the Pollard Middle School Council and Ms. Bibbo. Invite them all up to the tables, and I will get your slideshow up.
And perhaps Ms. Bibbo will introduce folks or allow them to introduce themselves, especially with masks, we're a little handicapped here.
No worries. So thank you for having us. I'll wait for Dr. Kudikens to return.
Sure.
And Dr. Kudikens knows us, so I'm Tamatha Bibbo, I'm the principal at Pollard. And I have with me Max. Max, you want to introduce yourself?
I'm Max Schumaker. I'm one of two student representatives at Pollard Middle School for the school council.
Great.
Hi, I'm Liz Welburn. I'm the ELA department chair for grades 6 through 8.
And I'm Tammy Gazoni. I'm the math department chair for 6 through 8.
Welcome, thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Barr. We're excited to be here. We have our school improvement plan. We created a small PowerPoint or a short PowerPoint that doesn't highlight everything that we've been working on over the past few years, nor does it, I think, encompass everything we will be working on as a school council. I'm very lucky, I have two students on school council. I have Leela and Max, a number of parents and a number of teachers. And we look at this document as a fluid document. So we even said, you know, we're presenting Tuesday night, and Wednesday we might add a bullet or change something. And so that's the wonderful thing about these plans. We do meet monthly, and we're able to not only look at the plan and develop it, but also just talk in general about what's going well, where do we need to improve, you know, what are some things that are exciting that are coming down the line for Pollard. So a couple of improvements since the last time we spoke, or changes from last year. I'm going to highlight the things on the left, and Liz and Tammy will go into more detail, and Max is going to actually talk about all of the things on the right. So as you know, we started a Data Science 1 class. We've now incorporated a Data Science 2 class, very exciting course for our seventh and eighth graders. Tammy will go into more detail about that and the work that they've been doing. Traditionally at Pollard, we've had a Chinese culture class, but this year we added a perspectives and connection culture course for the first time for eighth graders as an elective in the rotation, which is a really wonderful, rich course around what is culture? What does it mean to have culture? How is it different from other places and locations? One of the fun projects they worked on was really looking at our cafeteria and how food is the gateway to different cultures, and coming up with different projects, researching locations and food and ethnicities and bringing that in. We were very lucky to add a literacy support, two interventionists this year to Pollard in grades 7 and 8 for the first time. That's been really exciting. We're very lucky to have those people in those positions, as well as one of those interventionists also teach our LBC ELA in 7th grade. This has traditionally been taught by a special education teacher. Three years ago, we moved to doing this in math and saw incredible gains with our students on their growth percentiles, so we are now moving into ELA. We introduced a transitions program at Pollard. The high school has had a longstanding transitions program. This program is wonderful. It's for students who have been out of school for a period of time, for any given reason. It could be due to a hospitalization or medical absence, and they come back in through our transitions program, which is right now staffed by a teaching assistant and a full-time guidance counselor who serves as the liaison between school and hospital. Next year, we're hoping to introduce American Sign Language elective. We wrote an NEF grant. We will find out next week if we're able to offer this in 8th grade. We're really excited about this opportunity for our students, since ASL has just become an official world language. So Elizabeth Zajac and I have been working with a student on this project for her independent study and looking at ways that this could potentially be a gateway into American Sign Language for our students, grades 7 through 12 in the future. We're also introducing in the fall a Spanish 7A introductory course. This course is different from the current Spanish program, and it's for students who have either not been exposed to any Spanish prior to coming to 7th grade, new to Needham students, for example, who may be coming from districts that have not had Spanish as a language or a language option, or for students whose educational program has been disrupted, either because they potentially could have been a special education student and didn't have room in their schedule up to this point to have that opportunity, or it could be for any student who had disrupted learning. We're hoping to have at least one section of this introductory course, and we're looking at this as really an on-ramp into Spanish. And finally, our Launching Scholars program is alive and well and thriving, and for the first time this year, we're doing leadership lessons with our Launching Scholars. Every Tuesday, we have a curriculum. We have different instructors in there from the Launching Scholars instructors. Tammy has been teaching a few, Ms. Smart has been teaching a few, Ms. Robinson, and so we're developing, we're thinking about this program beyond math and really looking at how we can have them have experience with leadership and opportunities. And we've had one field trip this year with that program, which is really successful. So those are some of the programmatic improvements that you'll see from our program of studies, apologies, our school improvement plan from last year to this year, and then you'll be able to hopefully see where we're going in the next few years. I'm going to turn it over now to Max, who's going to talk about the bullets on the right.
So at Pollard this year, we've started a bunch of new activities, starting with the Pollard News, which is completely student-run. The acting, filming and writing for all of the sets are done by students. We view them in advisory. We'll get to view them later.
If we have time, we're hoping to show you one segment, if we have time.
We have plenty of other new activities after school, in various rooms around the school. And also, we previously had a Social Justice League, but we have split that into two groups, the GSA and the Social Justice League. We've brought back the ski club, and that happens after school, and that's great.
Thank you, Max. Nice job. So I'm going to turn it over to Tammy now, who's going to talk a little bit about our data science program.
Thank you. So as you know, data science became a course last year, and we offer Data Science 1 to our students in 7th grade, and we also offer the same course in 8th grade to students who may not have been able to take it in 7th grade, or they hear how great it was and they decide they want to take it in 8th grade, and then can take it in a subsequent trimester in 8th grade. And then they can also take Data Science 2. So that's the beauty of 8th grade, is they can also take Data Science 2 if they take Data Science 1 that year. Unfortunately, they can't take Data Science 2 in 7th grade. But at any rate, the whole, I wanted to give you kind of a gist, kind of a go-through of what the Data Science 1 course and Data Science 2 courses look like and what we've done with those courses, so you can get a quick overview of them. So the idea of Data Science 1 is really to give students a really deep overview of big data and get them into a deep understanding of what big data is and data in general. And getting them into spreadsheets and being able to manipulate spreadsheets really well, sorting data, filtering data, freezing rows and columns, manipulating data, finding means, medians, modes, finding standard deviation, which is something that most students don't do until they get into a high school-level course, and really understanding what that means in terms of a data set. And so we have a lot of conversations around what does a mean actually tell us about a data set? What does a median tell us about a data set? What does a standard deviation tell us about a data set? And so this all begins in 7th grade. The next piece is that students take the data and they really start studying the data deeply, and not just the values that they compute, but also the data itself. And so they're looking at the data and they're comparing the attributes or the columns, the variables within the data set. And then they start telling a story using the data set. And these are all publicly available data sets, so they're not data sets that I'm creating, but I'm actually finding these publicly available data sets online through reputable sources. And so, for example, one of them that we used actually last week was a ramen data set, and, you know, lots of people like ramen noodles, so the students were very excited about this. And we were looking at the ramen noodle data set, and they were comparing country to country, perhaps region to region. They decided as data scientists how they wanted to sort the data, compare the data. And what they were finding is that Canada, I apologize to you if you're Canadian, does not produce very popular data. But we also started talking about the questions that they could ask, like, who was rating the data? Because one of the attributes is number of stars, so it was rated from 0 to 5, and Canadian ramen is not rated very high. And so it's really interesting, and they look at the sources, so that they're asking really good questions about the data, the data sources, so the data literacy is becoming very, very strong. The other thing that we do almost every single day is we take a look at data visualizations that we, that I find online. Tableau actually is a really fantastic site, and we're going to talk about that momentarily, but they have really great visualizations that we look at. And what we do is we think about how are these visualizations built? What is, what did the developer want to say? What story were they trying to tell? And we also take some time for the students to take a look at the data in the visual and think about what would the catchy headline, what could a catchy headline be that would tell a story about the visual that they're seeing in front of them? So that's a lot of what we're doing with the visuals. Before we get to their final culminating project, we do a piece on ethics, because it's really, really important for us to talk about ethics when we're dealing with data. We want to make sure that people are managing data in a very positive way. So we kind of do three big pieces. We talk about transparency with data, we talk about fairness with data and privacy with data. We, I show them clips of, and I'm sure many of you are familiar with the film The Social Dilemma on Netflix, so we look a little bit at that. So we talk about the dangers of having your information out there online, and so we do a bit of that. And so that allows us to have those deep conversations around, or start the deep conversations around ethics. And then we go into the culminating project, which is basically the beginnings of, if you will, a New York Times article. So they decide what they want to do with data, and they tell me what their topic is going to be, and then I find a publicly available data set. And many of them want to do movies or video games and/or cars, and there's tons of data out there, so it's very readily available. And I pull all the data sets and I push them out to the students, and they create these really amazing visuals for their final, I don't know how to do that, do you? Awesome. So thank you. So this is, this is one of the final visualizations that Austin, one of my students last, and actually Max was in the class last trimester as well. And so the students also wrote a paragraph to support their work, and basically the paragraph was like a catchy paragraph to pull them into if they were to write a full article. And this was about, the data set was about movies, and the data set was Disney movies actually from the beginning of when Disney began developing films all the way up to 2016. So this student decided that he only wanted to create a visual about 2014 to 2016 PG and PG-13 films. If you were to take the title off and just look at the visual, it's very clear that this is about films. And then when you look at the colors, you can see that there are certain films that would be above-average grossing, certain films that are below-average grossing. You can see the genres, you can see which ones are PG-13, which ones are PG. What the students found really interesting about this particular data set is that they thought that comedies would be one of the most popular film genres, but they weren't, not at least PG and PG-13. So what they found is that other films, the adventure films were the more popular ones. So if you wanted to choose a film that would be above-average grossing or the more popular films that would have, you know, had the higher grossing values to go to a movie theater, you probably would choose the adventure dramas that are, you know, the colors, the salmon colors that are on there. Now, this is one-dimensional, and this is the end of Data Science 1. Tableau is Data Science 2, and that's where we go into the next part. So if you were in Data Science 2, you would be able to click on, in an interactive way, one of these, and you might be able to see which film it is that you actually wanted to see. So the next one, so this is actually a visualization that a student made in Sarah Burns's class, and Sarah teaches Data Science 1 in 8th grade and Data Science 2 in 8th grade. And so this was a publicly available data set that she found, and it's carbon dioxide emissions per capita around the world by country. And so this student put the data into Tableau and created this visualization. And so the top visual, you actually would be able to click on the country and on the circle color, and you would be able to see what the emissions are. But we can't do that because it's one-dimensional right now because it's a photo. On the bottom left, the comparison is by country, and on the bottom right, I believe the comparison is the blue Middle East.
Per capita?
Yeah. Sheet 1, yeah. So that's the beauty of Tableau, and Tableau is one of the, it's free, it's free software. It's called Tableau Public. It's one of the softwares that we were told when we, when we were talking about developing this program, data scientists, every data scientist we talked to said, "You have to use this software." It's fantastic, it's user-friendly, people in business use it, it creates such powerful visualizations. The other piece that's really great about it is it allows the students to do really fantastic analysis of the data. So not only are they putting this in, and it's really drag and drop, so they don't have to code, which is the only piece about the data science courses that we're not pulling in, but it allows them to do so much with it, and this is, it's just amazing, and the students have really enjoyed this one particular component. The final thing before I get to, well, actually I'll do the next piece, and then I'll talk about the last thing that we've done together. The last thing that Sarah did this year with her Data Science 2 classes is a field trip in partnership with the Mitchell folks, which was fantastic. And she did a unit on big numbers, and so this was, basically the students had to identify a big number that they wanted to, to be able to basically show students, like students at Mitchell, in a way that was very concrete. So for example, the population of the world, or the total number of cats in the United States, or the total number of times your heart beats in a year. And so the students took that number and they tried to make it very tangible for younger students. And so they created activities, and you can see in all the photos, the three photos that are upright, you can see they're with students that are younger, and then the photo that's at the very top in the middle, when we first got to Mitchell, we were planning, we had about a half an hour to sit and plan and get all of the activity materials together. So one of the things that one group of students did, for example, is they figured out how much food that they ate over a certain period of time, and then calculated the amount of, or the distance that they could travel with a Tesla. So that's the correlation, the kind of thing that they did, and they brought that to the students. So it was a very, very fun field trip. The walk back was interesting because the students were all using their maps, they didn't seem to trust that. I was like, "No, Pollard really is that way." But at any rate, it was fun, it was a great, great experience for them, and, you know, what we found is that their presentations were unbelievable, their activities were fantastic, and they really did a great job taking something that was very big and paring it down to an experience for the students that made sense. The last thing I wanted to talk about, which I'm really excited about, is just the partnership that we've made with folks in the community. One of the things that I have to say was one of the things I think we've all learned to hate, which is Zoom, but we also have learned that there are things that are really great about Zoom. So we've partnered with a lot of people, Sarah and I have, to get folks into the classroom. So we've worked with folks to come in for like 15 or 20 minutes to talk about their work. So data scientists and folks who just use data a lot in their work to talk about what do we do with the data. And it's... And it's not just data scientists, but folks who might be researchers who are, you know, using data in their work, and they're showing us what they actually do. And by doing so, we're also allowing folks, the students, to see the diversity in our community and also to see the richness of what they're going to be able to do with data and data scientists, or data science, when they're finished with wherever they go from here. So I just wanted to say, we've had Dan Goodman, Seema Maloney, Laura Burns, Sandra Schuffelbein, Joao Silva, Evan Judd, Christine Roy, Michael Figaroa, Becca Roush, and Dr. Aiman Milner, who is the Associate Professor of Computing and Innovation at Olin College. He's also the, one of the co-developers of the programming language Scratch, for those of you who know. That, he zoomed into my class last trimester on a whim. I emailed over there, and I was like, "Hey, do you have five minutes?" And he was like, "Sure." So people are willing and able, and it's been fantastic, telling us their life stories and how kids can get into data science. So I just wanted to share that because it's been really exciting for us and for the kids. And Sarah and I are loving it. It's been really fun. So thank you.
Okay. So I have to tell a quick anecdote. Word of the week? You heard that, right? I was observing an English class earlier this year, and there were two girls in the back of the room passing a note. And in old-school teacher style, I took it to read the note, to be like, "What's the juicy gossip?" And one of them wrote, "I can't wait for data science later." And the other one goes, "I know, we're going to talk about our laughter." And the next one said, "But it's not till after lunch." Unhappy face. And I'm like, "Only in this kind of district are kids passing notes about how excited they are for their data science class." Like, "The learning's that exciting." It was very cute. I was like, "I can't get them in trouble now." Can't get them in trouble. So I'm also very excited. The eighth-grade ELA department developed something in 2020 that rolled out in March of 2020 and was summarily canceled for obvious reasons. So we are rerolling it out this year and so glad to finally be doing so. And what happened in the ELA department was, back in 2020, we were consolidating and streamlining some of our curriculum in order to increase a greater variety of texts and approaches and genres and that type of thing. And we were arguing very passionately amongst ourselves about what the kids would really be interested in, what would be most compelling for their learning. And then we said, "Well, what would happen if we didn't actually have to agree with each other?" And we were so lucky to be in a building with Tammy, because I went down and I said, "Hear me out. For a unit, so for just five weeks, students, the way our schedule works, this is feasible, go to English maybe with a different teacher." And the teachers each teach a different unit. And kids rank their preferences, and we schedule them. And so they still go to English A Block like they always did, and they might have their same teacher, but their preference might have been a different class. And I really think any other principal would have been like, "Please stop." And Tammy's like, "Yeah, this year, what's happening? Right now, let's go." So we really worked together as a team to make sure the offerings we had would be diverse enough that we would catch a lot of different students' interests. So, and we were really excited because of this portrait of the graduate being focused on students being drivers of their own learning, adapting to new environments, you know, pursuing their own curiosity, that type of thing, that this felt like a really safe way to do that. So these are the five classes. We have one teacher teaching a class about fractured fairy tales. So taking a look at fairy tales across cultures, across media, what does the Disney look like? What is the original, et cetera, and talking about sort of all of the interpretive ramifications of that. We have a teacher teaching a high fantasy unit with the core text being The Hobbit. Their opening activity was all the kids came up with their own avatars. So like, "What's your archetype? So are you more of a sorcerer? Are you more of a hobbit? Or are you more of a troll?" Or whatever. It was really cute having them all come up with their stuff. One of our teachers is teaching a course on social commentary, so taking a look at Onion articles or Twilight Zone episodes, different types of artwork, and thinking about how do these very different kinds of media convey some sort of opinion piece. We have a teacher who's going down the dark hall of choices because once you get to her class, you're going to have a further choice of five texts. So it's a course on young adult literature and the idea of windows and mirrors and sliding glass doors and identity. She read easily 30 books, easily, trying to find the five that she thought would be most interesting for students. And these are the books she chose. And then we have a teacher teaching a course on a podcast. So the text for that piece is listening text, but she has taught them the strategy of sketch noting so that while they're listening, they're taking on paper notes, and they're doing pictures, and they're using color to organize their notes, that type of thing. And the course is very much around how do people make decisions, and this idea of evidence, and the subjectivity and the objectivity, and where does bias come into it, and that type of thing. We were very nervous. Our fear was, what happens if 80 kids want the podcast class, and nobody wants to go take The Hobbit, and now it doesn't work? And we were able to put 93% of students into their first or second choice out of five. 7% of them are in their third choice, and no one's in their fourth or fifth choice. And that 7% includes some students that, for social dynamic reasons, teacher fit, that type of thing. Even some of those students said, "This is hard for me. I like my teacher I have now. I don't mind that class. I know I said my first choice was fairy tales. I'm out. I want to come back too." So some of that actually represents some student choice. But we were just so excited to be able to offer the students something that felt like more of a high school or college experience, where you're choosing an elective, and did a lot of thinking around these students then having to move into a new configuration of students, possibly a new teacher, rebuilding the classroom community so that you can get moving quickly, and sort of following the logistics of breaking their routine in mid-year. So this course starts the day after February vacation, and students have ranked their choices. We, you know, worked very closely with the Special Education Department. One of our biggest goals was we didn't want these classes to be ranked from easy to hard in any way. That was a huge priority of ours. And we didn't want students to say, "The podcast is listening. That'll be easy. The Hobbit is long. That will be hard." So we really strive to make sure that it's properly differentiated, that there's all kinds of supports in place, that the students know that, so that people were really able to pursue their interest and not their perceived ability and the difficulty of the course. And we worked very closely with guidance as well for all of the considerations of changes in routine, that type of thing. So I have, one of the things that was also very important to us is that if students are getting completely different units, they weren't getting completely different learning. So for instance, if you're thinking about characterization, the fairy tale unit was thinking about, "We've got these different sort of fairy tale creatures. Pretend you have an Instagram account. How are we developing characterization?" Meanwhile, you know, in serial, they're talking about characterization as a witness. How do you develop the witness? So there's a lot of sort of depth and flexibility and genre bending with these ideas of characterization or theme. A lot of work around cross-text work. So they're listening to the podcast, but they also look at a quick article about something that happened. Or they're reading the fairy tale, but also the article about the fairy tale, or watching a little clip on YouTube. So we really were working to make sure that the learning was still standards-based. All teachers give students the same grades, just on different assignments. So they all get their composition grade. They all have literary analysis grade. They all have a discussion grade. And it's just the assignments look different, but we're making sure that we're sort of addressing the same competencies and that those rubrics look the same as a result. So sadly, I don't have pictures of students doing this because they haven't. They're about to. They had just started in March in 2020, and this was sort of opening activities. But it's just, it's kind of exciting, and I'm excited for the kids to feel like they have something they're picking. And I also think that if the structure works, this would be a cool opportunity to, do you have a guest teacher who comes in to teach journalism and is only going to do one period, but that's going to be available during that piece or something like that? It's just giving some more flexibility in terms of really appealing to student interest. And it's kind of nice in eighth grade, there is this little senioritis thing that happens in the eighth grade, that in the spring, you're like, "New thing, new teacher, new topic." It sort of is rejuvenating in general, I think, in addition to the curriculum. So thank you.
Thank you both.
Ms. Bibbo, I'm...
I'm going to questions.
No, I, no, I'm just, I'm disappointed that there's just not more enthusiasm.
I know, I know. It's hard at Pollard to be, to...
We can talk about that tomorrow.
And we're actually toning it down a little bit. We are. What I would say is, the story of our school improvement plan, and I think the story of Pollard, is we are increasingly trying to adapt and adjust to our students' needs. We're giving our students voice and choice across all realms, whether it's in the programmatic area, like ELA and math, as Tammy and Liz described, or in the programs that Max has gone over in terms of interdisciplinary. Every single day, we're being asked from kids, can we, even today, I said to Liz on the way here, and a student writes me like, "Can I start this club tomorrow?" You know, "And Ms. Bibbo, I need an advisor, and we're going to get going." And I'm like, "All right, Liz, do you have some, let's think about how we can pull this together." So really exciting things are happening. And it was funny, when I said to Dan, "Oh, I have to go first, and it's after a pandemic, and I don't know what I'm going to present or say." And then I thought about all these wonderful things that we have really started up and kept going and got excitement about at our school. And I think the story of Pollard and our school improvement plan also is thinking about ways where we can continue to have students have voice and choice, and that we're adapting and changing to their needs and their desires. In this PowerPoint, I know Dr. Guttegans sent it to you, there is a link to both that club activity page, which is a website with all the different clubs and activities and all the new ones, as well as the TV show that we showed this morning, our most recent television broadcast, it's about six minutes. So if you haven't seen one of the Pollard TV shows, it's really, it's really well-done. It's a bright spot that came out of the pandemic. We started filming it this year. We were doing it from homes last year in a hybrid model in a small capacity, and it's really just flourished. We had maybe three students to start, and now we have like 30 students. And so we're really proud of where we are, and I think of where we're going. I think I'm very, I'm not, I don't think, I know, I'm very, very fortunate to work in a school and in a district where people are constantly looking for ways to have new ideas, innovative ideas, be excited, and bring them to life. We, I've never, in the eight years I've been at Pollard, I don't think we've ever felt as though we're there and we're going to hold back or we're going to slow down. And it's, and it's easy, when Liz comes to me or Tammy comes and says, "I have this crazy idea," it's easy to say yes, because I know it's going to be done with incredible integrity, lots of work, and a lot of effort by everyone. And I'm just very fortunate to be at Pollard, where our teachers put in 100% and want to do these new sort of crazy ideas, because you don't know until you try if it's going to work. So that's our presentation for tonight, and we're open to questions. Max really wants questions, you told me, coming here tonight. He was like, "Bring them on." Yes?
Also, we were going to do a musical number, but the choreography didn't come together in time, sorry.
Yesterday. It got blown because of yesterday. I'm sorry, Max, the tap shoes.
We could do improv.
Maybe later.
We have Improv Mondays. There, it's only reserved for Mondays, right, at Pollard? We do do that.
Coach us on doing that. Dr. Guttegans, let's have a little improv now from the school committee members. I can talk about enthusiasm. Liz is ready to go. Liz.
I really enjoyed the presentation, really enjoyed the new programming. It is very different than what my middle school experience was, and I never thought I would say, like, I would love to go back to middle school under these circumstances. So I have a ton of questions, but I won't, I won't ask all of them. I think my main sort of question is, for the data science and this really exciting ELA program that I know hasn't actually taken place yet, is this something that if the ELA is successful, that will be, end up being a part of the program so that all students experience, for example, the data science?
So for ELA, yes, I mean, our hope, and I don't want to speak for Liz, but I believe that we try to put things into place that will become part of the fabric of the school. So the ELA program will definitely live on as long as it's working for students. I know you're, you always take feedback. We're always asking for surveys, and it might need to be adapted or adjusted or changed. But if this type of cross-cluster elective choice works, I actually think it could be replicated in other places as well. What Liz is underplaying is the logistical piece of this is huge. To reschedule and reshuffle 460 kids is huge, and she's doing it, and it's, I mean, it's fantastic. It's the right thing to do. And so I don't want to downplay that because it is, and it's fantastic. And we will put all effort into that. In terms of data science, yes. I mean, Tammy and I just met with Jean Tower to talk about ways that we can incorporate even looking at our engineering program in our data science program and say, "How can we maybe blend some of this? Where is there overlap? Where is there not?" Right now, every student gets engineering, and engineering is fantastic. The students love the course. And we're also looking at, excuse me, our technology elective that we have in seventh grade and seeing where there's crossover and blending there. So we're trying to figure out a way where, right now, not all students are getting Data Science 1 and 2. It is an elective. It is a choice. And how can we look at ways to make sure that all students could have access to that? Right now, they can. It does reduce another elective choice from their schedule. And so, and because Tammy's the math department head, I'm sure she's thinking about ways that it's in the curriculum or ways that there are connections to math that currently exists.
And let me just add, if I can, I would love to hear how the ELA works out, even if it ends up having, you know, snafus. I would be very interested in just hearing what worked, what didn't work, and where you might go next. And then Tammy, to the data science, it seems like something that not just eighth graders need, it's something that like our whole world needs. So I wonder if the eighth graders are available for higher, you know, in the broader world to present their data science information. Thank you.
Anyone else? Andrea?
I also agree with Liz. The excitement among everyone is just really wonderful to see. I was wondering if you could just very briefly touch on something that you didn't bring up in your presentation but was in the school improvement plan, and it was about the restorative circles and how those are being used at Pollard?
Absolutely. So this year, Megan Bonamolo and Jeremy Greenwood, who are two assistant principals, decided, they actually wanted to try this last year, but with the interrupted school year, and Megan was running the Remote Learning Academy, they paused for a year. But they, as their professional goals, have been studying restorative justice circles as adults and how it works, in terms of whether it's a discipline concern or it's just something that had happened in the community. How do you talk about hard things? Whether it's current news, current events, or just locally. So both of them have not only done a lot of coursework on this and studying, and thanks to Mary Lamie, who had training for many of us on restorative justice circles, they participated in that, and they're running it. Jeremy has attached himself to a seventh-grade cluster and advisory, and Megan has done the same in eighth grade. And they've conducted, I believe, three circles so far on our half-day Wednesdays when we have the extended advisory time, and they're going to continue for those extended advisories for the remainder of the year. And they have specific, the first circle really was looking at who you are, what are the norms, how are we going to work in the circle, what kind of topics are we going to have, what does safety look like? Here's a talking piece, this is how a circle works. And then the last two, they dug into, "We're having some discipline issues at Pollard. Let's talk about this. What do you think as students we can do? How do we rally around what's happening in our building or our school or our lunchroom?" And so every time they're doing a topic, it's because they're getting feedback from the students on a topic they want to address the next time they're in there. What's really interesting is they're, they were both incredibly sort of nervous about how this was going to play out. What would the teachers think? You know, how would it, you know, they're going to see us in this moment. And the feedback has been incredible. The students look forward to it. The teachers have come back and said, "We didn't really know how this was going to go. This is really wonderful. And so we're hoping to be able to replicate it, and that the clusters that they're working on can model it and it can grow, just within the building." We had always used restorative justice circles, not always. I would say for the past five or six years, we've used them in specific discipline cases, kind of in the assistant principal office with families and particular students. But now we're looking at, how can we use it in our school as a community meeting to talk about, you know, hard topics or just to come together when we need to address not only something that's happened in a crisis moment, but really to maybe be proactive about how to make our school a more inclusive environment for all. So right now, it's going well. I would love to have Megan and Jeremy share more the end of the year, after they've done it, and what their, their learning is, and what we're going to do next year to expand it.
Oh, yes. The only other thing I want to say is, I just, I'm... The only other thing I want to say is I just, I'm so impressed at the way you and your teachers and everyone in Pollard seems to really model that behavior that we want in our students and that it's okay to try things and not do it perfectly the first time and have that growth mindset. And it's wonderful to see all of you really embody that for your students.
Thank you. This was terrific as, as always. You weren't here last week when presenting the core studies and I said, and I'll say it to you here, everyone should take data science. So I'm very impressed by not only what you're doing with it, but as you wrestle with this issue of how do you get more of it in, I'm going to beg of you, let's stop pitting it against engineering, let's not do that. I mean, if you really need to find a way to squeeze it in, data science is about English, it's about language. Data science is about history and social studies, the ethics issues and the issues of how data is used. It's math, I mean, it's interdisciplinary, it needs to be everywhere. Engineering, I mean, and not that there isn't plenty of data science in engineering, but let's not lose one for the other because they're both fabulous. It's just, it's incredibly impressive. It's a great way to go, you know, as far as tableau. I think there's so much the students are going to be able to take forward and put a lot of pressure on Aaron in the high school, I hope, to do, you know, something similar and kind of move up with that. I know you brought it, you were mentioning the community things and you had invited us to a couple of those. I was all set to go to one, it was a snow day.
I know.
So if it's coming back, if he's coming back, you gotta let me know because I absolutely want to go to that one about the guy who was doing software for the hedge fund.
Oh, yes.
Absolutely. But it was a snow day, so.
It has been, the, Tammy, I know, went through all the folks that have come in and that's just a few emails.
Yeah.
People have been unbelievable in their response to want to come in, share what they do, talk about, I know somebody came in to talk about infectious diseases and they're, they're studying of that. And I think the students seeing more people in the community that actually use this and apply it, I think the more we can bring people in, if we can't go out for field trips right now, you know, the better. And we're excited about, about that and continuing with that.
So I, I close with a suggestion from Max and she talked about TV. I think we really need to have this community see how exciting middle school is because it, you know, for years, people always, people always dreaded middle school for lots of years. Now, you know, my kids went through and they enjoyed Pollard and that was even before you were there. But, you know, what you have done, the excitement, the enthusiasm, the can do, the let's try things, it's just so incredible and I think our community needs to see it. And so think about how you could work with TV, you got the high school, you have the Needham channel, be happy to engage with you and think about how you can tell these great stories of what's going on at Pollard to the bigger community because they really need to hear. They'd be, they'd all want to go to middle school too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Please watch the TV show later, you'll, you'll have a good laugh. It will be, it'll be a lot of fun.
So I was actually going to say, and then we'll go to Mike, if we curtail our questions a little bit, we might be able to watch the video. So we'll just keep that in mind as we ask about Mike.
Sure. Two questions, though. One is for the extracurricular activities, which sound tremendous. If you could talk about sort of that process of coming up with that idea and sort of getting the approvals and the advisor and there's certain amount of students that need to participate. And then the second question to put maybe Max on the spot of sort of, you know, we're still in a pandemic and everything going on in the world, how has, you know, your school experience been and to sort of share, you know, perhaps reflections with the group here tonight?
Well, it's, it's certainly been a lot better than last year. We've done a great job, like getting back into school. Kids are a lot more comfortable within schools. We had some trouble at the beginning of the year with some behavior, but in these past few months, we've done a lot better educationally and socially, which is really great.
You having fun?
Yes.
Like your teachers?
Good.
All right. I'm glad. Max joins, he comes to every school council meeting and we always talk about what can we improve? What do we always talk about?
The food.
The food. Yeah, I know. I was like, I know, we're getting there. The salad bar will come back at some point, but it's pretty good. Thank you, Max.
Keep talking about it.
So for clubs, and the process for us is pretty easy, to be honest. A student, so for example, the Girls Empowerment Club that started this year, we had just two or three girls who came up and said, we really want to talk about issues that have to do with being a female and what it's like to be a girl in society and, and how we can become more empowered and have a voice. And they were looking at different projects and they started a club, those three girls. I went to the faculty and said, does anyone want to advise these girls who want to start an empowerment club? And a teacher immediately was like, I'm on it, I'm in, it's what I want to do, when do we want to meet? So that happens a little bit at the beginning of the school year and those matches happen. And we have a club fair in October where kids come to the cafeteria for a day, all the clubs are out there with their advisors, they sign up and it's not a, you know, it's, you don't have to really, you know, if you sign up, it's not a contract, but those advisors then reach out and say, we're going to meet on Tuesdays at 3:00 in my room, I hope you'll come. And they keep encouraging them and they set up a Google classroom, for example. So we've had best buddies for years, Social Justice League, as you discussed. Social Justice League, so years ago when I came, GSA had a little bit of a stigma around it where kids weren't joining and they didn't want to say that they were part of GSA for whatever reason in the past. And they had asked me at that time, it was my first year, to change the name of the club to Social Justice League because they wanted to accomplish more than just gender sexuality issues. They wanted to talk about racial issues and other biases and injustices. So at that time, we changed the name to Social Justice League. The past two years, I've had students say, we love Social Justice League, I want to be part of that, but we need a GSA. And these are the reasons why. So we separated the clubs this year and we now have one of each. On Friday afternoons, we have between 50 and 60 members at GSA and on Thursdays, we have about 40 students at SJL.
Do you want to, can you?
Some of them overlap, some of them don't.
Can you just explain the acronyms?
Oh, sorry. GSA is Gender Sexuality Alliance. It used to be Gay Straight Alliance. That's, the name has now changed to Gender Sexuality Alliance and SJL is Social Justice League. So, and they have two very different missions and visions and goals and outcomes and they have two advisors. We also, just two weeks ago, had a group of ELL students to our building, go to a teacher and say, we really want to do board games. We can learn English really well when we play board games. And all of our friends are talking about games like Monopoly and Jenga and we don't know what they're talking about, you know, because our culture might be different. Teacher said, I'll stay after school and we'll do board games. Started two weeks ago, every Thursday, he's after school in the library doing board games and it started with one student and now there's four. So, so we try to just respond in the moment. I'm very fortunate, I think, that I'm in a district where, or in a school again, where the teachers will just say, I'll, I'll do it, I'll, I'll step up. We try to solidify those clubs over time by going to Dr. Alex Montez McNeil and saying, can we get a stipend for this club and really make it something that will live on. Typically, though, our first year, it's done unstipended, voluntary by the teacher, students join, we use the data to say, we have this many kids involved, excited, can we stipend it for the following year? So that's the process right now, really, students email me or meet with me, we talk about it, we say, how do we get some other students, let me match you with a teacher and let's see where it goes from there. So that's the process at Pollard.
Thank you.
By the way, I didn't really mean curtail questions, I just meant if we.
I'm not getting curtailed, I've got to say something.
I did not mean that. I just meant we hope we'll have some time to watch the video, that's all. Matt.
Well, thank you. You know, thank you for sharing what I imagine are just a handful of innovations that you're implementing at Pollard tonight. Every single thing you spoke of and presented tonight was grounded in students, students' experience, student interest, student passion, exploration and engagement. And, you know, we, the messages that the adults, from what I can tell in the Pollard community, the messages you're sending to your students are, your decisions matter to us, your interests matter to us, and we are going to try to build an education experience that works for you, not just the adults in the building. That is powerful. And I can't imagine how you're doing it with so many students. This is typically done in small, progressive campuses, but you're making it happen. And like Liz says, I can't wait to hear what works and what doesn't because you're modeling risk-taking for, for the adolescents in, in your charge. And, you know, we, when we first rolled out Portrait of a Needham Graduate, the question was, what needed to change for teaching and learning in order to build these competencies? Everything I heard tonight is the exact change that I think we were hoping or looking for however many years ago. Creative thinkers and problem solvers, communicators and collaborators, socially and culturally responsive contributors, responsible and resilient individuals and empowered learners. So I want to thank you. And on a separate note, I think the ASL thing's going to take off, having been a principal and bringing that to, to a community. There's something about that hand mind connection that kids, that some people just, it's, it's amazing to watch. So just like data science, cutting edge, and now we have a ninth grade class, so there's some alignment going on. And I would imagine that, I think ASL may end up in the high school someday, which I think would be really.
That's the hope, yes.
Really powerful to add another, another piece to this offering. So thank you. Really excited to, to hear more about what's happening at Pollard later on in the year.
Thank you. Aaron.
Thank you. I certainly echo a lot of the excitement and praise that my colleagues have already rendered. I had the ultimate AB test because one of my kids was there the year before you came and the year you came. So great leadership brings great results and so I appreciate all you've done and all that's been done in the school since you've joined. I wanted to ask, you know, we've talked a lot about the excitement of the new programs and everything, but I'm also a little concerned just that they're sustainable. You know, we get very excited and everybody can rally and think up something new. So I'm just curious if you can talk a little, Liz, for the ELA, is the idea that these same five electives get put forward or do people come up with new ideas every year? How does it work?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked me that, actually, because an interesting situation was last year, we had the hybrid model. And the belief, and in the fall, we had no idea how the year was going to unfold, if we would end up totally shut down or end up back in the building or what was happening. There was a great deal of appropriate focus at Pollard on building student relationships, having kids work collaborative, feeling comfortable back in school. And the belief was that to ask students to go to new teachers, new classes, different schedule, different structure in that particular year wouldn't be a comfortable learning environment. So the teachers looked at the offers and they said, we think we should do the book clubs because that offers an extra layer of choice. And if we waterfall the classes, we can share the book quantities. And we think we should do Serial the Podcast because so far, it's been the most popular. And again, not to the exclusion of the others, 93% of kids are in their first or second choice, but that's been the most popular. And those five teachers, every single one of them taught the book club unit and every single one of them took, taught the Serial the Podcast unit. And then for this year, we went back. So one of the things that I think is really special is the leadership outstanding. I could be very enthusiastic about that all day long. And the teachers, their flexibility to say, for this year, my passion project, I mean, David Blake's been waiting his whole career to teach a class on The Hobbit, believe me, right? Like, he sends me Hobbit memes, I'm like, stop. And for him to say, I'm going to set aside this thing that I've spent a year creating the lesson plans and the readings and the projects and I've got the costume and the whole thing, and instead, I'm going to teach someone else's two passion projects. And he said, but I think the kids are going to have to do that because we're just not going to ask that question. So in terms of sustainability, we love the structure, it will depend on the schedule. And, you know, Mackenzie with Serial the Podcast said, this, this journalistic event has gotten older. If it doesn't continue to be popular, do we do a different elective? So especially with these teachers who are a wide range of brand new and very veteran teachers, they're excited about the creative part. And then the structure of the department and the structure of the standards allows us to make sure that we're not just, you know, chit chatting all day. There's the, the structure of what is it we're trying to learn? And the amount of time that Needham invests in teacher prep. So when parents are wondering, what are the teachers doing when they are not standing in front of the children? It's things like Emily Dudet coming down and saying, my five kids who don't take English are so excited about these choices, how do we get them in? People have to sit down and figure that out. Who's the coverage? Who's the TA? Who's the liaison? Who's taking what? So all that type of thing happens because we have the time to sit down and make that happen. So I think the sustainability is good, but I think the flexibility is better and perhaps more important. So we'll have to see how it goes.
Great, thank you.
I wanted to ask Dylan, what do you think about this?
I was just going to mention something, actually. But I'm just speaking to all these great initiatives that it looks as though these middle schoolers are taking. Just from personal experience, when I was at, in the middle school with help from Ms. Pivo, she spearheaded, she spearheaded this grant that me and a couple other individuals were looking to get and we actually did get it. And it's just amazing to see some, some type of evolution in a sense that there are so many branches now that have come off and expanded and made this school, this middle school, something that is very similar to certain aspects of a high school. And I think that it's just amazing that it really looks as though the faculty are doing an amazing job to prepare middle school students to take on a more high school approach and then eventually be ready to succeed in the real world. So I think it's just really great.
Must be good to hear. Didn't we hear something about this before the pandemic? Didn't we hear from David Blake? I think he came, maybe it was your last school and project, and he was talking about this very thing. So what you've done.
And finally, it's happening.
And finally, it's happening. I would like to see the costume, but. I think even that's a huge accomplishment to stick with something that could have been derailed easily. And the, I'm not going to repeat everything that was said, I agree with everything, the enthusiasm is outstanding, the response to students' individual interests, which I think, at least I have one kid, if that started a little better, a little earlier or a little differently, I don't want to say better, he had a wonderful experience in Needham, probably would have awakened something a little earlier. And then the whole idea, I think Andrea said it, I hope I'm attributing to the right person, the idea of allowing students to see things, try, risk-taking, making mistakes, it's critical from little on up. None of us is perfect, none of us gets it right the first time and you can rework it. And so that, I just, I just want to emphasize those. Do we have time for the video?
If we can do it right now, we can.
Okay. So the one thing I.
You can keep talking while he gets ready.
So the one thing that I would say, Connie, Dr. Mark, we have an incredible team at Pollard, like the reason things happen is because there are so many folks that chip in. And I think, and we talk about this in Pat and a lot, there are lots of reasons not to do something. You have to have the reason to do it. You know, so we, you can come up with all these reasons why this isn't going to work, it's not going to happen, not right now, we're coming out of a pandemic, we're wearing masks, it's too much and you have to say, but this is, this is good, this is the right thing to do. And in terms of sustainability, Aaron, I was thinking about your question, we often think to ourselves, is this going to become old or is this not going to work anymore? And if you go into it with the goals meeting at the end, and, you know, and the outcomes and what you want, although it might be old for the adults to do it again, every time the students experience it, it's new for them. So I think about that with speakers, with assemblies, we're like, oh, we've seen this guy 10 times and we're like, but it's so good the kids have never seen him. So I think when we think about these units, you know, it's always a new experience for the kids, even though for the adults, we may have seen this for a couple of years in a row, so.
Which builds, then the enthusiasm builds for you again, even if you're doing something a second time.
Okay, so here's some, some, I guess, comic relief.
Oh, well, that's a bonus.
I know.
Well, anyone else?
Well, it should. Oh, there you go. No, if you just click on it, just give it a minute.
It's okay to make mistakes, Dr. Gutierrez.
Yes. As I say, I can airplay it possibly. Yes.
This could become a trend, we had a great video last meeting.
We could look at some Hobbit memes.
So were those the same five texts or five projects that was, that were planned last year and then they?
Yes. So it's the same ones that had initially been planned. And, you know, we're interested to see, so we have a consistent feedback form for students so that they're answering the same questions for every class. And if we discover that students say, "Hey, this was fun, but we didn't feel particularly challenged, there wasn't enough to talk about," or "This didn't turn out to be as fun as we thought, what happened here?", that we can either tweak the class or say, "Let's move on to a different genre, let's move on to a different text." So we're just going to wait and see what the students think.
While I'm waiting for the download, it's probably dead air. There's something that, when Matt said something, I should have said before about yours specifically, innovation isn't just trying stuff. I mean, I'm really, I rail against the fail-fast idea, just throw stuff against the wall. And I want to point out, and I think it's important for all of us, and for the students too, the amount of work and thought that you put in to this idea of the five electives, and how do you get the standards, and how do you measure it? How do you make them comparable? The reason most of these will probably be successful, you know, you'll have some glitches, is you put that work in. You didn't just say, "Oh, cool, we'll all try something." And I think that's just, it's a lesson for all of us, and be commended for it because it's a lot of work.
The teamwork with the Special Education Department, the teamwork with the Assistant Principals around the scheduling, I mean, the number of eyes that have been on the options, the schedule, the kids, and which class, the rosters, it's been so affirming because this isn't anyone else's pet project. But they know it's going to be good for the kids, so they're, "What do you need?" They need them all the time. What do you need?
Last thing, I think we're going to see this now. Tammy, the enthusiasm about data is really amazing and appropriate.
All right. So sorry we had to download this.
Oh, it's not going to work?
No, it is, and we're almost there.
We're just waiting, okay?
I know.
We can take a break.
Max, anything to offer? Joke of the day?
Okay. Okay. So I told my wife she was drawing her eyebrows too high. She looks surprised.
Have to get that in a minute.
Whoa.
Good morning, Pollard. Please stand and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good morning, Pollard. Today is January 31st. We have a lot coming up this month. Black History Month, remember this? It's Chinese New Year, Valentine's Day, February Break, and Groundhog Day. I would read as inspired artists. Listen up, this one's for you. Enter the Pollard and MSLA bookmark contest. Check out the details here, or stop by the library for more information. Contest ends February 9th, so don't delay. Congratulations to the 7th and 8th grade GOV winners. The prestigious geography V was recently held after school in an undisclosed location and contains some of the brightest lighting in school. Fifty contestants battled it out for the top spot, yet only two emerged victorious. Now joining us with a Pollard exclusive interview, we have Matt and Joe on the scene. Matt?
Thanks, Rita. Well, I'd be the first to congratulate you, Ochs, winner of the 7th grade B. How do you feel?
Good.
So where'd you learn all that geography?
Math.
With all this success, where do you think you'll go next?
Well, Matt, short-term answer, day three.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Over to you, Joe.
Thanks, Matt. Wow, that was an amazing turnout. I'm standing here with Toby. This is such an honor. Can you tell us how it feels being the 8th grade GOV champion?
Good.
I live in a party in all those countries.
No.
It's a big party over there. Well, from all of us in school, congratulations to the two champions.
That was a lot of snow we got over the weekend. That's the weather.
Marco here at Sports. Since winter break, we've had many basketball games, both boys and girls, with reports stating that our teams were extremely successful while maintaining undefeated streaks. Fans and spectators will soon be allowed back to the events to cheer them on, so please stay tuned. Our dance team also performs at basketball. The dance team has been performing at basketball games, and their performances have been very impressive. I got you, bro. Thanks, bro.
Good morning, Pollard. Today is January 31st. We have a lot coming up. Black History Month, it's Chinese New Year, Valentine's Day, February Break, and Groundhog Day.
It's Groundhog Day. Yes.
What?
Apparently looking. Well, that was the groundhog.
I'm going, I'm Bruno. We need to talk about something.
This Wednesday, it's Groundhog Day.
What are you doing?
Checking my stocks.
Wait, you like money?
Uh, yeah, I do. And hey, want to have some fun while participating in the stock market? Want to make millions while working with the team? Then join the Pollard Stock Market Game. This 10-week club will be running after school through a hybrid at-school and at-home model. No prior experience needed, and all are welcome. Contact Mr. Healy by February 1st if you're interested in joining. Join this code. The game will run through February and through May.
Have you had your notability documents disappearing? Well, lucky for you, I made a tutorial that you can check out right here that should fix your problem.
Hi, I'm Katie Memory's Student Council Representative, here to let you know that we are hosting a door decorating contest. Starting today, we want each advisory to design and decorate the outside of your door with a kind of sun. Each student should write an act of kindness they have seen or a way to show kindness, and these should be incorporated into your design. Don't forget to label the grade and advisor's name somewhere on the door. This contest begins today and must be completed by February 15th. Prizes will be awarded to both 7th and 8th grade winning design. Look for official details and restrictions in the daily bulletin.
This Wednesday, it's Groundhog Day. I've said this before, I will.
Black History Month is coming up throughout the whole month of February.
Remember to educate yourself on the history of the month. What's to do to educate yourself more in ways you can interact with the Black community during the month?
Attention all 8th grades, on the February 9th half-day, there will be a presentation from the high school about course selection during the extended advisory.
Congratulations to the following Pollard students who recently attended the MMEA Junior District 2022 Music Festival. The following students are Mia Allen, Nana Barzalay, Caroline Colton, Isabella George, Kaden New, Tessa Jones, Esha Raj, Delia Roach, Charles Rikman, and Nadia Tess.
The Pollard Drama Association is having a special performance of their critically acclaimed musical, The Lion King. Live on the Pollard stage, if you love musicals and theater, this is certainly the time to come and learn us.
This just it. Students and staff can now come to The Lion King Junior all for show.
Just a heads up, that Friday basketball will resume after February 1st.
Pollard Power is a club that focuses on confidence and feminism and overall equality. Recently, we've partnered with Niko V in interviewing Jay Spencer, the owner of Frank's Tech Bakery right here in Needham. He is also a board member for Nwari, Needham United States Racism Initiative, advocating for Black-owned businesses near us. If you want to see more or get involved, visit the Niko V website here. Good morning, Pollard. Today is January 31st. We have a lot coming up. Black History Month, Chinese New Year, Valentine's Day, February Break, and Groundhog Day.
Wait a minute.
Wow.
Little entertainment starts our Monday's off. So Mr. Canoyer and Mr. Alexopoulos, who are our technology teachers and our technology integrations and specialists, oversee this club and these students, and they film every day, before school, at lunch, after school, they pull it together, they edit it, they do it all, and we give them a lot of freedom and they have a lot of fun. And I think it's been really fun for us as audience members. I just said to Max, like, "Are you going to do it at some point?" To see what they have to offer each and every, you know, other week. So we'll send it your way as well. We send it home to parents so that they can also see it.
That's outstanding. The amount of content, the amount of humor, the amount of editing required, the backdrops, wow.
Any other comments or questions about that?
I mean, my wow, I could keep on with, but that was-
All set and very, very much appreciated, and maybe next year, a little bit more enthusiasm would be welcome.
Totally.
I didn't bring breakfast like I did one time.
I know. Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Max.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
We can now move into, well, also an exciting topic, but of a different kind of excitement, the school calendar for 2223, Dr. Gudcanst.
Thanks, Madam Chair. So what you have before you is a proposed calendar for the 2223 school year, and I really just need to this evening highlight some structural pieces to the calendar and some big ideas related to the calendar. So, and this is posted on the district's website for families who might want to look at it. If we can, at your next meeting, we would vote the calendar so that we can make it official and move on. Structurally, the big idea is that the first day of classes for students in grades 1 through 12 would be on Wednesday, the 31st of August, with the staff coming back on the 29th and 30th for professional development and staff meetings. And then that would mean that we would be able to have our last day of school, barring any snow days, on June 15th. If we have one snow day, it would be Friday, June 16th. And of course, if we have to go into the following year, as we do this year, we will be in session the day after Juneteenth this year, which is now not only a state but also a federal holiday. So that's also included in this calendar, as well as the traditional holidays that the Needham community, school holidays, the Needham community observes. So that's the, kind of, the beginning and the end piece. I think the other piece of our calendar that has improved over time is that we have kept our very important early release days on Wednesdays just to help the community. Parents have provided feedback over time, saying that that is much welcome to have a certain day of the week. We use those days for professional development and learning for our staff. We have, and the calendar yellow days are for our pre-K8 staff, and blue days are pre-K12. And those are really, quite frankly, some of what you heard this evening from Pollard, a lot of that work and planning takes place on some of those days, and of course, other times after school for teachers. But that's some of the work that is going on. Graduation, I did not mention, would be on Sunday, June 4th. Moving forward into the following year, the 2324 school year, we're having conversations about whether or not it is possible to have more early release days on Wednesday to facilitate not only scheduling at the elementary level, but also additional collaboration time and professional learning time for our staff. It's tricky to do that. There are really three key pieces that, they're not obstacles, but they are things that we have to keep in mind. One is our nutrition services program. On early release days, we do not provide a hot lunch, and that works right now because we have planned for that over time. However, if we have more early release Wednesdays, we actually start to have to have a conversation about what our nutrition service program looks like, because we wouldn't be able to provide necessarily a hot meal on those days. So there'd be declining revenue, we would have a staff that would be present and would need work to do. So again, not something that is, we can't overcome, but it is something we have to seriously consider. The other piece is time on learning. We are required to provide 900 hours minimum instructional time for our elementary students K5 and 990 for our 612 students. We do provide that right now in our schedule, a little bit more at the elementary level than at the secondary level. But if you take away time and non-instructional time for students, then you impact your overall time on learning. And so that's a consideration that is at play. And the last consideration, which is as significant, and that's transportation. We have, as you know, really, we have different layers to our transportation program. We provide transportation for, in vans, in our yellow buses, for the preschool, for St. Joe's, the high school, buses from Boston. It's a complicated, complex system, and just like at the airport, as I think many people have experienced recently, you know, one delayed bus bumps out others and creates, you know, down the line, some other issues. So anytime you adjust the schedule, this ballet of how we have buses scheduled, and you move even one school's schedule, that impacts all of the schools. And it could impact them in a way that you just couldn't provide the kind of program that you want. I say all of that because there's a desire, I think, the principals and some staff desire more time on Wednesdays. We'd like to make our schedule more flexible, particularly at the elementary level, and it's a challenge for those three reasons: nutrition services, time on learning, transportation, there may be others as well. So we're going to continue to work at it. What you have before you, I think, is a good, solid calendar for next year that will provide opportunities for professional development and learning, and provides a good balance of days in the calendar. And I will, you know, continue to bring you updated information about a 2324 calendar over the next several months and into the new year as we plan ahead. With that, Madam Chair, happy to answer any questions about this proposed calendar.
Thank you for the continued look at how to improve things. Questions or comments? We'll start with Matt and then Mike.
Just a quick question. I know some districts actually have the whole Thanksgiving week off, sometimes attendance dips, it allows staff or other people to visit family in other parts of the country or world. Is that ever a discussion point about looking at the full Thanksgiving week, knowing that we have two days with students in session or not? Just curious.
You know, it has not been a discussion point, that, now, in preparation for this calendar, what I neglected to say is that we meet with the PTC presidents and we have them kind of kicking around and talk about it, because they're really helpful in providing the parent perspective. We also meet with the Needham Education Association Executive Board and get their input and ideas, and then central office and principals, you know, look at this. I don't recall lately, that may have come up before, Matt, but I don't recall lately coming up. And, you know, you can really do anything, it's just that you've got to make those days up. And so I will tell you that families get very anxious, some staff members do too, but families get very anxious when they see school ending, you know, anytime after the 15th or 16th of the month, because they will, I mean, they'll outright say, "Yeah, well, we're out of there by then, because we're going to camp, we're going away." So it is, you know, it is a bit of a trade-off, but certainly, you know, can be a consideration.
Mike.
Thank you for the presentation. And what's nice to see with the school calendar and the addition is certainly the additional piece recognizing the more inclusive cultural religious holidays. And if you're able to speak perhaps, Dr. Gudcanst, about sort of how that has helped with teaching students, understanding different backgrounds, how that maybe has impacted when due dates might be for school projects or testing, I think might be helpful to sort of hear how this has been a part of the district's holiday planning.
What Mr. O'Brien is referencing is on the second page, and thank you for bringing this up, are the legal, culture, and religious holidays for 2223. This will go in the handbooks, when, they'll be presented to you later this spring, and these will go in the handbooks, which is where they'll kind of rest as a reference point. I do not have an answer for your question, and what I will try to do between now and your next meeting is see if I can get some anecdotes or information from the principals about, to the degree teachers might have been able to, or even families reference this, just to at least acknowledge what is going out there, going on out there for our families in the community. I'll see what I can, I'm not sure what I can find, but let me see if I can find some information about that.
Great, thank you. And if I could add a second question. Since you had brought up planning for future calendars and looking towards perhaps expanding more Wednesday early releases with planning, and there's so many different logistical components going on to it within the district itself, also figuring out the consideration for families with their own personal planning, as I'm sure you'll be hearing from, how that continues for some families to be a struggle, certainly with equity in terms of planning after-school, opportunities for their students. So how that sort of all gets factored in will certainly be important.
The PTC presidents did bring that up, that, you know, would it be possible, for example, for the district to, you know, offer some Needham Community education programming for some students on Wednesday? You know, if there are more, can there be even more? And so I think, I think the district would have to respond in some way to see what might be able to be, you know, if it's between the Y or Parks and Rec or Needham Community Education so that there are some options for families. Now, there's a cost associated with that. So, you know, that's another trade-off, that do we want to create more that may exacerbate, you know, a problem around equity and cost than we anticipated? And I think that's why the, you know, the calendar is, it's incredibly important because it sets a structure for your school year. Embedded in it, though- Embedded in it, though, are some trade-offs and some value statements about, you know, where are you spending your time? And so it's tricky in that regard. So yes, we would have to consider that as well, Mr. O'Brien.
Thanks.
Anyone else? So, will we vote this at a future?
Yes, we'd like you to, if we can, because families are eager to say, "What's the calendar?"
Right. They are. We get letters now and then through the fall and winter about, as people try to make plans. And just credit Andrea for really coming up with the idea of including all of the holidays and special occasions, I'm not sure they all can be called holidays, in this document, which is then in the school handbooks. So it can, we are not putting everything on an already complicated piece of work, the calendar, but having these available.
Yep.
I put it down, my agenda, maybe, thanks. Update on health and safety, which isn't like the Groundhog Day. It's kind of like the Groundhog Day part of the Pollard video, but it seems to change very frequently.
A brief update this evening, because we're kind of into it this week with our new testing program, and I won't share what I shared last week. It's a benefit of meeting weekly, we're, you know, we can rinse and repeat. So we are in the process of providing at-home tests for our families. We have already provided them for the staff. We're in the process of getting information from families, I'll share that with you in a moment, about providing tests to make sure that our families have tools to strengthen prevention efforts, aid in the identification of positive cases, and to build confidence. And I think we're all in a space perhaps now where we feel a little bit more confident about what's going out there, and yet, we're, you know, we're not letting our guard down. In order to get this allotment of test kits from DESI and the test kits that we bought, we've asked staff and families to opt in. We're still asking families to opt in by tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. For this week, families can opt in again next week, who have not already opted in. You only have to opt in once, but we'll send out another reminder next week for those who did not opt in, to see if they may want to in the second week, and we'll do that again. We're using our Health at Test Station app to send out texts and emails. We'll be distributing the tests weekly to staff and to families for students to bring home in their backpacks. We're asking, we're requiring families to take the test on Sunday, and staff members at some point, regardless of the symptoms, just to gauge readiness for school. And then we're asking to think about midweek, perhaps Wednesday, and we want staff and families to have flexibility to be able to use that test in a way that makes sense for their family, their family dynamics, the number of children at home, symptoms or not, what's going to make the most sense. The symptomatic testing program also is at play, and we will be offering that. So we're moving now to the at-home tests and symptomatic testing, getting away from, we will not be doing surveillance testing, and getting away from our test and stay program. All staff and students can participate, and this is for students and staff who may, after they've come to school and they've been working or playing for an hour or two, are not feeling well and need to go to the nurse. And the nurse will help decide if that student needs to be tested, and then we go from there, and the student may or may not be sent home based on the outcome of that test. Families need to sign on to the CIC portal, which is our health partner. They've been receiving that information about how to go ahead and do that. And the CIC staff will test our students, and families and staff can opt in to either one of these testing programs, or they can choose not to opt in to either one of them. That program, symptomatic testing, begins on the 7th, and our rapid home tests, families will be receiving on Friday of this week. So, so far, we've distributed the at-home tests to our staff. We have done the same, we've texted out, texted to our families and emailed families to opt in to both programs. And again, tomorrow, 10:00 a.m. is the cutoff for this week, and families can opt in next week if they choose to. They'll receive the same message to do that. This Friday, we're going to send home tests with students in backpacks, and the contract tracing will end right about on Friday. And then we want families to take that first at-home test this Sunday, which is the 6th, and then symptomatic testing will begin for our students and staff. So far, 71% of the staff have opted in to taking an at-home test as part of the program. And as of about 5:00 o'clock this afternoon, 80% of families have opted into symptomatic testing, and 55% have opted in to the at-home testing program. Hope that number grows, and there will be an opportunity, again, as I said, for families to opt in. So, we're committed to, even, you know, the news is good out there. At least, we're cautiously optimistic about the news, the positivity rate coming down, hospitalizations coming down, students again not being, children not being impacted by hospitalizations. It's all going in the right direction. And we're still keeping our health protocols in place. The Health at Test Station should be completed every morning after you assess your child's health. Masking does remain in place. We will be talking about masking. The off-ramp for the state is February 28th. Whether or not it's appropriate, at least at the high school in Pollard to lift that a few days before February vacation is a discussion point, but I need to be convinced it's healthy and safe to do so, and so we'll, we will get there. Fortunately, we've had some good people thinking about it, talking about it, and we'll keep doing that along with our other protocols. And although we can't, you can't access it on your TV screen or on your Zoom screen, I encourage families to click on the health and safety red logo on the website. We have updated information, updated charts, with great thanks to Mary and Alex, Terry, Susannah Hahn, and others who've been updating information. There you can get some updates, and we'll continue to update that, because DESI had another conference call last night, and they updated some more information. So that's just kind of routine now. We just, we're just updating things. So I encourage folks to do that.
With that, I'm happy to answer any questions the committee may have.
I wonder why the difference between symptomatic testing and at-home testing, and yet, there it is. And of course, we hope that this, as Dr. Gudicant said, symptomatic testing is for those who come to school well and then develop symptoms as the days goes on. If your child or if your, if a staff member is feeling ill, they should stay home. That's still a very basic tenet of our, keeping our kids in school. Questions or comments? Gosh, she did a good job. They understand everything and have no questions.
Families have been great, by the way. Families and staff have been great.
Yeah.
Just a clarification question, that you're still getting details through webinars with the state regarding the program. Is this just to tie up loose ends, or are these substantial changes?
Yes.
Okay. I should have guessed.
That was the best way to respond to that.
I think last night was more details on what Dan covered. Tomorrow was another webinar. Stay tuned.
Okay.
Let me say this. I think, what I would, what I would say at the risk of angering the commissioner, I think we have a good plan in place, and unless what is being offered by DESI by way of rules or programs or protocols would have a significant impact on what we're doing, we may have to, we may have to go our own way for now, because I think we have a good program in place, and I don't see any reason for it to be interrupted, even as we start it. So, it won't be civil disobedience, but, and I'll make sure we don't get in trouble.
Good question. Well, with you at the helm so far, again, what about attendance in the last week? It had gone up quite a bit.
I haven't, thank you, Madam Chair. That's another area that we'll continue to keep watch. I did not, in the last several days, produce an attendance report for staff or students. However, I do know that our staff, attendance is continuing to go up. We still have six students, we still have six staff members, but it is not at all like the week of January 3rd.
And our ability to staff classrooms or missing positions because folks are out sick, how's that going?
It is still an incredible challenge, and we're leaning on existing staff to do double time or to be pulled away from another responsibility, which is not what we want to be doing, but that's still occurring.
We look forward to continued health and safety in our schools, which has been the priority, and keeping our kids in school, and move to this new testing program as a way of helping with that. I like the idea that families have some flexibility, some ability to make some choices as we fight the good fight, or whatever we're doing, I'm not sure what this is. We'll now move into action items. Dr. Gudicant?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First action item is regarding the middle school and the high school program studies. I do, before I make this motion, with feedback from the school committee, Aaron Seacott and the high school team made some additions, improvements to the high school program of study, and the middle school program of studies is as it was presented to you last week. So, with that is my recommendation that the Needham School Committee approves the 2223 middle school and high school program of studies as submitted.
Moved by Michael. Seconded by Liz. Discussion? Matt?
Thank you, Connie. And Dan, as you mentioned, I really appreciate the, it's great to see the changes in there. I think the family members will have a much better understanding of X Block and ninth grade seminar and directed study, things that are parts of many, many students' course of study in a way. So, and that was great. And the softening, a little bit of the language for the grade prerequisites in math. But I did, I would, I guess I'd ask for a few minutes of my colleague's time tonight just to sort of share, I think after listening to the Pollard presentation tonight about something that sort of is an interest for me and something I care about a lot, which is the messages, again, that we're sending to students and families from adults in the system. I've been in a lot of schools, it's something I pay attention to a lot, and I'm really interested in. I think we heard some great messages today, and so I do wonder just about the use of grades as a prerequisite, even a recommended prerequisite for some of the courses that we have in there. And so I, you know, I wonder what a ninth grade student in accelerated math who's getting a B+ and kind of sees A as the prerequisite to go into geometry. And I worry, I suppose, that there may be a group of students who either may not self-advocate or whose families may not push to continue in that class, even though, given this year and this crazy time, that folks may be capable of actually doing and taking that next level of challenge. I guess I also wonder, you know, why we have some recommended prerequisites of As and Bs for courses like Robotics 1, or Intro to Computer Science, or some of these other electives that really, I think, may be shutting out a whole group of students who have an interest in that, but may feel like, "Hey, I'm getting a C in math, maybe it's not for me." And, so, I would just, I don't know how the decisions are made, and, but just hope that, knowing that grades are, it's pretty hard to guarantee consistency of grades across multiple people. Grades are dependent upon student-teacher relationships sometimes, what might be happening at home, and also can be affected by family income for folks who could afford tutoring or Russian math. And so, I just worry a little bit about the messages that this might be sending unintendedly, and the impact that some students who we may never know, or families, may be internalizing some of that. So, I think it's a wonderful document. I think it really captures the vision of all these courses and opportunities. I love the vision that we have of Portrait of a Needham Graduate, about students taking charge of their own learning. And so I just feel on some level that putting grades in this way, again, as sort of a sole prerequisite or recommended prerequisite, may be inadvertently, you know, moving some students out of some courses that they may, they otherwise have taken. And so that's all. I just wanted to share that. I appreciate the change, but I think there may be more discussion, hopefully, about the messages that it might send, again, unintendedly, to some students and families. So, thanks.
And if I may, Madam Chair, I appreciate that a lot, Matt, and the way you just articulated all that. I think Mr. Seacott shares a lot of those. You know, the high school, like most high schools, is a big, complicated place. The program of studies is, you know, this dense document, and I think the work of developing those courses over many years, I think the high school's demonstrated success in working with individual students and being very intentional about students who need, who, for whom the adults sit down with families and students and say, "Look, we're going to do this. It says this, we're going to do this." I think there's been a lot of planning and latitude and intentional work for students. So I'm, I hear what those concerns are, and I think they're absolutely legitimate. I'm less concerned at a place like Needham High School that they will, if they turn a student off, that's one thing, and that definitely could happen. So I hear that point. And I think the adults are well aware of what student needs are and can make appropriate adjustments. The last thing I'll say is that, and so I think that those conversations take time. You know, part of this is, we discussed this last week, they have to begin scheduling, I think, soon, and they can't begin scheduling, I tell them that, until the program of studies is approved. And so to, you know, redirect everything, I think, or many things, becomes a bit of a challenge. I also want to repeat that the school committee has influenced the direction of our program of studies, elementary, middle, and high school, and you'll continue to do that. And so, if I felt a student was losing out or being harmed, I would recommend something differently. But I think this is a good document, knowing that the work that's gone into it and the work that will go into it over the next several weeks to make sure students are able to, you know, be in the courses that are important to them.
Just a quick response, and thank you for sharing that, Dan. I know from experience that it's a conversation, it's student-centered, that it's teacher input, teacher recommendation, you're talking with the student, what's going on, what do you think you want to go for next year? So I, what, I'm only talking about the unintended message on the page, because I know, in reality, that's not what happens. And so that's, thank you for that. I wanted to be clear on that distinction, because I know how it works, and it's a great process. And I just, I'd love to have those messages and that student-centered stuff come out in the written piece. That's all.
So maybe I, to clarify, it sounds like there can be a discussion of schedulers, teachers, parents, and students, if it's felt that a student really would like to be or belongs in a class and doesn't have the exact grade prerequisite. Is that accurate? And I'm not, and I think it's a great idea, one thing I also am grateful for is if students are helped to be successful. Not that you want to aim low, you don't, but also not to feel completely dropped in deep end and out of league, but that's not what you're saying. You're saying that you want students to have opportunities and not be unduly prevented from those.
And I am going to vote for this document. This is more of a, as conversation continues.
Other comments in reflection, after Matt's reflection, or your own comments? No, it doesn't look like that. Seeing none, and thank you for that, from all of you, both of you. We come into the vote. All those in favor of the middle school and high school program of studies, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays, abstentions, 700. Thank you for all the work in the last week and the work, mega-work before that. And now, Ally gets to schedule, and the middle school gets to schedule, including some of what we heard tonight earlier. And now, another very important topic.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So, within your packet and with gratitude to Ann, we've laid out, there are three warrant articles, they don't have a number yet, and, one, the school committee- And one, the school committee, we're asking you to, to request funding. And the others to really support these articles when they do come to town meeting, because they will be inserted by, by the select board, having to do with facilities. So let me maybe go ahead and make the recommendation and, and go from there. It's my recommendation that the Needham School Committee votes to request that the Emory-Grover construction article be placed on the May 2022 annual town meeting warrant. Further, that the school committee endorses the anticipated articles to provide heating upgrades at Hillside, and heating, ventilation, and air conditioning upgrades at the Elliott and Broadmeadow Schools.
So moved?
Moved and seconded by Michael and Andrea. Discussion? A clarification, the school committee will be bringing the warrant article about Emory-Grover funds, and the select board will be bringing the other?
Well, technically, they-
We don't know that yet.
Well, technically, Ann, the select board brings all capital articles, but the proponent will be the school committee. Did I say that the right way?
For the boiler and the RTU upgrade projects, the proponent is the building maintenance department. Those are, those are articles that come from that department.
They'll be inserted by the select board.
Correct. So we're just endorsing them.
The, Connie's question, though, is regarding Emory-Grover.
Correct, we are the proponent for Emory-Grover.
We are the proponent for Emory-Grover.
And it's inserted by the select board? Well, because they vote on all of them.
They vote on all of the articles, correct.
So you'll be the, you will speak to it at town meeting?
I will be glad to see it move forward. Other questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none, we come, thank you for all the work in putting these together. It's a huge amount of work on part of Ann and the design folks to bring what we're going to bring. We're not there yet, but we're moving in that direction. Hearing no further discussion, we come into the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? 700. Onto town meeting.
We have one more action item, and these are the revolving funds fees for transportation, athletics, preschool, and community education. And I'm just realizing that we're going to have to postpone this vote because I do not have the language for conflict of interest, which is my fault.
Yes.
I should have included that because it's possible that a member of the committee could have a conflict of interest regarding the transportation fee, athletics, preschool, or community education. So with apologies, I will bring this to you next meeting and make sure that you have that language, there's a form you need to sign and all that, so.
Have all of us done that before?
Well, Liz and Mike have not yet, so that's why I think it's important to do it the right way.
But I don't know if you have to redo it every?
Well, you, for these, for these fees, because you have not voted these fees yet.
Okay. Because your students or your family members might participate.
Is that a problem? The good-
If we have a quorum, if we have four of us that aren't affected?
The three of us, right? If the three of us abstain?
It would affect.
Well, they could abstain and still pass the fees for Michael and Andrea and Connie and Aaron.
I think these can go, I mean, I think there's a consensus for many of the programs that would like to advertise the fees, that the fees are likely to stay the same.
There's no change, there's essentially no change. That's the other thing, too, that we're not, we're not advocating for that. But yes, I suppose we could do that. I think that would be fine.
I'll do that.
So the, the idea is that you could abstain or vote in the affirmative.
If you have a potential conflict of interest, you will abstain. If you don't, several of us do not.
Yep.
Let's just check the fees again. Community education, that doesn't, okay. In that case-
So I'll just make the recommendation then, that my recommendation, the Needham School Committee approves the 2223 revolving fund fees and program changes for transportation, athletics, preschool, and community ed as submitted.
Second?
Moved by Andrea, seconded by Michael. Discussion, further discussion? That being said, we'll come into the vote. All those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye, and we'll just, I think because we have some slightly complex, go for a roll call vote. Michael?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Liz?
Abstain.
Aaron?
Aye.
Mike?
Abstain.
Abstain.
And I vote aye, which makes our vote 403, and we can carry this forward.
I appreciate that. Thank you for that little misstep.
I couldn't count in my mind fast enough whether we had enough of us to vote yes on it. Yeah, that's right. I need the popcorn and the tickets. I'm glad Liz was able to do that. We'll now move into school committee comments. Any comments? We're all shoveled out, our kids are back to school. And the New Year today, again, we all wish well to all who are celebrating. The year of the tiger. It seems appropriate for ending up, hopefully, moving forward with COVID. Any other comments? In that case, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. Second? Moved by Andrea, seconded by Liz. Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? 700. Thank you, colleagues.